For eleven July two thousand nineteen, let everybody know that the meeting is being taped. So if anyone else is taping, it'll be available on TCTV YouTube channel. I don't know if ours goes on channel eight or not.
It does.
Oh, it does? I'm gonna have to start charging for my appearance for this. So if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know most people are here for the pre-town meeting. We're gonna take care of one piece of business for the committee. We have an individual that is, we're short one member right now, and we have an individual that has volunteered for it. So Faith, if you just wanna come up, and we're gonna just do a quick Q and A, and then if everybody's happy, we'll appoint her to the committee. She will not be able to vote tonight. But we're gonna ask her to sit up here with us and be an active member, and she'll get sworn in next week. So first, I have a couple of questions I just need to ask you. Is, are you a town resident?
Yes.
Are you an employee of the town?
No.
Are you on any other boards?
No.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Yes, I do.
I knew that you would.
Well, you know, that's, that's fine. I'm always the one to ask questions. Faith, is that, is it okay if I call you Faith?
Please do.
I'm Wilford Spring. I prefer it to be called Will.
Okay.
I wanna first of all, thank you for volunteering for the community. This is a time when the community, the town, and because of this involvement with what's going on, this committee also has difficult decisions ahead of us here. So it takes, takes a lot of effort, a little bit of effort on our part, or whatever. You don't always get recognized for volunteering to the extent you should, and that's, that's really primary for, for all volunteers. I only have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, no problem.
My first question is, for what made you decide to take and choose this committee out of all the eight or other ten committees which you could've chosen for the community?
I thought with my background, I might be able to help out the best here, and it would give me a good chance to learn how the town operates, to make better decisions for myself as a taxpayer, but also I've had a lot of time with budgets as a property manager, capital expenditures, I've seen light line items, and dealt with a lot of different aspects of, I think, what you guys deal with and look at. So I thought maybe my skills that I earned that way would benefit the town if I volunteered.
Okay. Now, just as, as a general overall question, what do you think the, the role and responsibilities are of the advisory committee for this community? Just a few words.
As I know so far, I, it looks like you guys look over the budgets, you look over what's going on in the town, you question anything that you think isn't right, and to ask a lot of questions, that would be my role at first, just to get a grasp of everything.
If you go back in history, back in eighteen seventy was when the first, I call it Finance Committee, was established in Quincy because of management, financial responsibilities for the community weren't working well. So we, they formed another community to look over what the administration done. Mass General Law was actually put in place for Massachusetts in, in nineteen ten. So there's, there's quite a bit of history behind this. You'll find that there's, there's plenty of resources, us as well as resources that you can end up looking up and finding out more about what's, what's going on. And, and thank you again for, for volunteering. It's, like I said, you don't always get the, the recognition.
Kinda like being a parent. You don't get the recognition there either.
Exactly right. I'm all set.
Debbie?
I'm good.
Bob?
What's up?
Faith?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Faith.
Persio?
Yep, as, as a member of the advisory committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations. You're welcome to join us up here.
I will. Excuse me.
At this time, the advisory committee meeting will go into, the meeting will go into recess, and we'll open the pre-town meeting.
Yes, we could end up, we could, we'll, we'll open it up. If you need a motion, I'll make a.
I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, you do.
Do we? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to end up going into, take a recess and going to pre-town meeting to discuss the warrant for a July eighteenth special town meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Okay, so, so as many people know, we're gonna have a special town meeting on the eighteenth of July, so next Thursday at the auditorium in the middle school. I think that's the Safka Auditorium, is that right? First, I'd like to thank Chief Bennett, Chief Dickey, Officer Fliss for coming. I happened to see them last night, and because there are, whichever way this goes, there's impacts to both sides of the town, and we have people from council on aging. Thank Carter and Kelly for coming. I'd also like to thank, thank Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Mattson, Mr. Marquez. I said that right?
Marks.
Marks, okay. From the school committee for coming, so I, I think this is important. This is the town's pre-meeting, so any town member, I'll, what we'll do is we'll cover the first, the warrant article, what it's gonna say, and then we'll open it up to any questions. Please feel free to address any questions. One thing we as a committee will not really be able to do is address how the school committee might cut money, or how the town might cut money. We can give, we can give suggestions, and we can, we, most of us have been through the budget cycle, so we kinda know what's in the budget. It's a very tight budget. I don't think that there's a lot of extra stuff in there for anybody. But at such time that whichever way this goes, if cuts have to be made, we'll look at it with the Board of Selectmen. We have got a really good working relationship with them to try to help minimize the, the impacts of the cut to whoever it is, okay? This is not a good thing for the town. It's not an us versus them. I was talking to Mrs. Hughes earlier, and, and Mr. Curry, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I should've introduced you. I prob, I apologize. You know, we're opening a new school in town. This should be a happy occasion. It's a good thing. It's here. The school's there. I've seen it built. I mean, I, I went by there once or twice, and, you know, pretty well done, and I think they've done a really nice job on it. So with that, I hope it printed out properly. Okay, so I'm gonna read the, the first article, and then we as a committee will discuss, open, and then we'll open it up to the floor, okay? So the first article, which has, was signed on July first, I believe, by the constable, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and eight dollars in no sense to fund the town's assessed share of the Narragansett Regional School District for FY twenty or such lesser amount as the district may subsequently certify, or to take any other action related there on, thereto. It's required that be, this has been submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is for the, the school district, and a majority vote is required. So I will open it up to the board for any comments, questions. Okay, so, so one of the things that, that I would like to say is, at the annual town meeting, this number was seven point four-ish million. I think the school committee has done a good job of reducing it. We would like to have seen them got to the six point four or six point five. I'm gonna use round numbers. Don't quote me on the exact numbers here, 'cause it's, it's just easier to say six point five million than six million four hundred and twenty-two thousand. So the, the town, what the town did was they took their budget from last year, said, here's your budget from last year, you can add two and a half percent to that, okay? There were some unknown costs with opening the new school. I'm not sure that we really got those separated. So the first action was, we were originally asking for a town override of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand. The school budget passed at town meeting, however, the override did not pass, and that's why we're in the position we're in. So people at the school committee meeting, it's not something I believe that the school committee takes lightly. They're, they're charged with educating our children. So, and, and they believe, they put forth a budget. Now remember, this is just Templeton's assessment. Their actual budget is almost twenty million dollars, so. I, I know Will's gonna have a question, so I'm gonna let anyone else. Debbie, do you have any?
I'd like to hear from the community before I end up.
That would be fine.
Okay. I guess, okay, so would anyone from the community, I'm, I'm gonna ask, how about, I'd like to do it this way. I'd like Chief Bennett and Chief Dickey to, if they would mind, just kinda saying what this impact. Let me back up a little bit. If the town approved the six point nine million dollars, there's about a four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar deficit that has to come out of the town operating budget, okay? And what does that mean? It means a lot, and, and I've asked the chiefs to come into, what does it just mean to their departments and their?
Well, just as a point of order, we should be talking just about, well, the, the first article and not necessarily the cuts and the impact. The impact would be on the second one, Mr.?
Okay.
If you.
All right.
Can I just ask a quick question?
You absolutely can. Could you, well, you don't have to come up. Could you just say who you are and what street you live?
Mary Instrom, I live on Highland Avenue in Baldenville.
Okay.
So the override didn't pass.
Right.
So this is just the normal budget. We're not doing another override in any way, shape, or form.
No.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
This is not necessarily a, 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 a normal budget. This is actually more than the town has actually put, put in their general fund. We passed six point four million roughly, and this is asking for six point nine, almost seven million. So there's, there's substantial amount of money that's being asked with this, with this particular warrant article.
Thank you.
So I believe, if we have no other comments, Mr. Terrenceini?
Mr. Chairman, Carter Terrenceini, I'm the town administrator. I would like to circulate to the board with your permission the draft motions that the select board would intend to put forth, so that you have not only the warrant article, but the actual motion that it is the intent to make, subject to proofreading, final review by town council and the like.
Thank you.
And this is the number, you were present last evening.
Thank you.
So these numbers are based upon the decision of the board last night.
Thank you.
And where's Mark? And I, I sent a message up to the superintendent. I'm sure he knows already.
Yes, thank you.
I sent a message up to the superintendent.
I've seen this last night, but most people haven't.
I just wanted to make sure you.
Okay, let's just do the first one, and then we'll look at the second one. So we won't be voting on the motion?
No, we can't vote.
We'll, we'll vote on the original.
Right.
Knowing that this is coming from the Board of Selectmen.
Right. Yeah, effectively, we cannot do that. We can't.
So my question to advisory is, the moderator, we're asked for a recommendation on the original warrant unless it doesn't go to vote, then the secondary motion. Hold on, just a second. So the second, the, the substitute motion would go, as a board, do we wanna make a recommendation of how the board would vote for the second, for this, the substitute motion?
I'd prefer to hear from the gentleman, that he was, he had his hand raised, and, I mean, I like to get, like I said, I'd like to give the community a chance to input before we even make a motion.
I wasn't, no, I wasn't asking for a motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, sir.
I don't need to speak now, but I will if you wish.
Sure, if you like.
I'm Daniel Keane. I live on Fall Memorial Street in Baldenville. Been a resident for most of my life, sixty-eight years. My question is, this is regarding the Narragansett Regional School District. And the district, of course, includes Phillipston and Templeton. And you indicated earlier that the sources for the twenty million dollar budget, it comes not only from Templeton, of course.
Right.
Council of Templeton, Phillipston, and federal money.
Right, or state money.
State money.
I would, I would defer to Mrs. Hughes if, if there's any federal money that's involved.
Yeah, there's ten-one grants, there's another federal grant money that comes in.
And state money.
Right.
The, my concern is, I've heard, and this is, I, I, I'm not able to document this, but you should be aware that it's being said that Phillipston has their own elementary school, and they believe they don't wanna have to send children from their elementary school to the district. Similar, similar to the way when this district, district was established, we had our own elementary schools in Templeton, Baldenville. And we, that was not part of the district. The, the town paid for those separately. So my question is then, does the figure of this sixty-nine seventy-eight, six million nine hundred and seventy thousand, Templeton's share, reflect Phillipston's full share, or Phillipston's opinion that they shouldn't have to pay for their?
The, no, okay.
Mic clear?
Yes. I, I know what you're, I know what you're, I believe I know what you're trying to say. So the six point nine million is Templeton's share only. Phillipston is assessed, it's, there's supposed to be about sixteen percent based on population, and if you want me to go to more details, I'm gonna defer to Mrs. Hughes. Okay, but they actually do contribute nineteen percent. Not really significantly different, but that would be three more percent Templeton has to come up with. You're correct. They have their own elementary school, okay? There is a lot of chatter out there about what they wanna do. They had a, a woman from the Massachusetts Association of Regional School Districts, did I say that right? Was out there at a meeting last night in Phillipston and explaining what, they've talked about breaking out of the district. I've heard talk of Templeton breaking out of the district. To be honest with you, I know our committee has not really looked into what that all means yet, because nobody said we're doing it. I mean, I think we have some general ideas, but what the financial impact, obviously the Board of Selectmen would be involved, and, and school committee, and so we're not down that road yet, but that six point nine million is Templeton's assessment only.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if you got a follow-up, please.
I do. Uh, thank you. There are two issues. One of them has to do with the way the assessments are set, and they're not necessarily by population. They're other, it's a complicated formula.
We were discussing that a little while ago.
And, and we've struggled for many years trying to straighten that out, and it still hasn't been.
Yep.
But that's one issue. A secondary issue, no matter how they calculate the assessments, is the fact that Temple, Phillipston, rather, chooses not to have their elementary school as part of the district, so they don't wanna have to pay.
No, their elementary school is part of the district. Dr. Casavan has purview over all of them.
So then, would, would that be the same to say that currently with the students in Baldenville Elementary, I don't know if there's still students in Baldenville.
Well, there was up until the end of the school year.
End of the school year. So at that point, was that part of the district?
Yes.
And, but the district wasn't paying for?
Yes. Are they paying for everything? So the district comprised of Templeton, it's Phillipston, K through twelve. Okay, and then whatever the, the complicated share of funding, okay? What they have tried to do is keep Phillipston kids at Phillipston Memorial, and Templeton kids at, well, at, when TC was open, Baldenville, this school, when this was a school, and then K and, K and first grade were, have been at the middle school for the last two years or three years. So everybody's part of the district. So, but they, like I said, they try to keep the kids from the town in the town.
The financial implic, excuse me, if I may follow.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Financial implication of that, though, would be, I know Templeton, for sure, was responsible for, for, I don't know, five thousand dollars worth of repairs. I don't know if that's changed. I think it has. Maybe not. And similarly, probably Phillipston would be, have some agreement in that line too. So financially, it affects the communities and the district.
So one thing you have to remember is Phillipston is owned by the town of Phillipston, that school. Just like the elementary schools in Templeton are owned by the town of Templeton. The district owns the middle and high school. So, okay, so I believe, and, and Mrs. Hughes wanted to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So when there is a repair necessary at either of the elementary schools, the district pays for anything up to five thousand dollars. Anything over that becomes a capital expense that the town would pick up, because that protects each town who still owns their buildings from not burdening the other town with their expenses. So that's, and it's a five thousand dollar cap at this point in time, and that's governed by a regional agreement.
Okay, I had that backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you.
Sure. And any other questions?
Good, thanks. Anybody else?
Of course.
Tony, just to clarify, Carter handed you the, the alternate motion, just for the people in the room and, and the video. The difference that, when, what we voted in last night as a floor motion, the difference is that this, in Article One, where it's six point nine, the board last night voted to offer six point four nine, or six point five. I know you wanted to talk in round numbers. So thereby reducing the budget, it would have to go back to the school district for their certific, their recertification.
I was gonna get to that when we.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that people in the room at least understood what the difference in the two pieces of paper were, although we're, you're talking only deliberating about the six point nine.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna get into that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
It was open for the floor, so I just wanted to speak up. You know, I like to talk.
Okay, so. I thank Mr. Curry for, for bringing this up. So what this substitute motion means is, I don't believe the six point nine will get voted on unless someone makes a motion right away, but you have to have, you have to have conversations for and against it before you can even make a motion to vote. I believe that this motion will be brought right, brought, um, right away, okay? If it, the six point four five, or six point five number is approved at special town meeting, that doesn't mean a lot yet. That is a number that goes back to the school committee and said, this is what Templeton is willing to pay. They would have to recertify, they, they, their options are recertify the six point nine number, recertify a lower number, or recertify this number, and in fact, they could certify a higher number. They, they could. Right now, we're on a one-twelfth budget, meaning the town can spend one, or the school district can spend one-twelfth of their FY twenty budget, which is certified by the school district, but not approved by the town, which is about one point six million dollars a, a month. Roughly nineteen point two, nineteen, twenty million dollars in that range, okay? So until this happens, and then the school committee has a chance to deliberate, see what they can do, whatever, we don't really know what's gonna happen. If they come back and don't certify this number, then we go to a, a district meeting where the towns of Templeton and Phillipston get together, and they have a vote, and they could vote a higher number. I personally don't like the fact that someone from another town can tell me how much, how I, my taxes are gonna be, or I have to lose a police officer or fire services. I don't think that's right, but that's the way it works. So that, that, that is sort of the process going forward. So there's been no decisions made as far as the school district, as far as the school district knows, they're working with a six point nine million dollar from Templeton. That's what they're getting from Templeton, until the town says otherwise. Mrs. LaJoy?
I'm just curious as how the state cert, did the one-twelve, although the number didn't certify.
What happens is, the number was certified by the school committee, and that's what they go by. So the town doesn't certify a number, they vote for the number. They vote to say, okay, we will pay our assessment. The, the school committee certifies their budget. That's, the school committee reports to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so they don't, while they're hopefully good stewards of our tax money, that's who they report to.
Favorable vote on this, does that mean that Phillipston gets to stay in Phillipston, and Templeton is gonna be in Templeton? Or is this still up to Casavan to play?
So I don't think that this committee decides who goes where. That's a school committee decision on where students will go.
No, I realize that, but if the town votes this money in, is that locking into Casavan what he's already proposed? Or is it still up for grabs that Phillipston will be allowed to stay in Phillipston, and Templeton will have the original amount of teachers without the cuts?
So at the school committee meeting on Monday, they voted to allow an additional thirty-two to forty, I can't remember the exact number, additional school choice children to come to Narragansett Regional School District if they chose. That, I hate to say generates revenue, but it generates money, 'cause each child that comes in is X amount of dollars. So what they've done is they're gonna add four grades back into Templeton Center. Okay, it's gonna reduce class sizes, for the most part, and what that's gonna do is it's gonna allow the people that wanted the school choice into Narragansett, a lot of them are gonna be forced to go to Phillipston for class sizes. Now they can stay at the new school. We run a risk of, if we make someone go to Phillipston, they don't have to stay here. They can go back to their town. And for each child you lose, that's five thousand dollars, okay? So by, and if you only lose two from third grade, and two from fourth grade, and two from sixth grade, you know, you've lost, lost, or say ten total, you've lost fifty thousand dollars, but your costs haven't gone down fifty thousand dollars, 'cause you don't, it wasn't, it wasn't in the right areas to where you could say, okay, well, I don't need a third grade class. So right now, the plan is Phillipston kids will go to Phillipston, Templeton kids will go to Templeton. I think there's a few, some people from each town have chosen to, have asked to go to the other schools, 'cause they've got, that's where they've been. But for the most part, the plan right now is to do it that way.
Thank you. I think Mary is, is what you're saying, is the budget goes through, but once they have the budget, Dr. Casavan and the school committee can decide to break up pretty much how they want. That's not the decision here. We're just, I realize that.
Yeah.
But just because it, it goes through, doesn't mean those kids will necessarily all go there. It's still up to them afterwards, so it could be changed if we're not voting on if the kids come in here or there. I think that's what you want, like, if we definitely get the budget through.
We, the Board of Selectmen, the town of Templeton, the advisory committee, don't decide how many kids are in a class, what kids go. That's all up to the school committee. And their meetings are open to the public. Sir?
Just for clarification, the town has been, Templeton and the, the district has been in this situation as recently, I think, FY two thousand, twen, uh, nineteen, or fourteen. Thirteen or fourteen, I think it was fourteen or fifteen, one or the other. So it's not new, and we have three entities we're dealing with, Templeton, Phillipston, and the district. And even though Templeton and Phillipston belong to the district, the district is its own entity. So just because Templeton believes it wants to have its children go to one school or not, it's really up to the district.
Yes, I, technically, you're correct.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think it's appropriate to share the information that was provided by the business manager to us on the ninth, uh the business manager to us on the ninth as to s- class, the class breakdowns. Uh as to the, what, what that would be, uh if some, somebody's interested in that.
You talked about the recent one that I got, right? Not the updated one from the school committee meeting?
Yeah.
That we got?
On, on the ninth.
Anyone else has questions while I'm looking that up?
Yeah, I, to, to answer your question, because I think it, it would still left it a little un- unanswered. Your question was, is the configuration going to change if we say yes to question one as it is? So, under the six point nine, if someone said, if uh you, if, if there was a yes vote for question one, there is every reason to believe that it would continue the way that you see it as it, as they configured it now. They would not have to change anything because they wouldn't have to change their money. A no vote, if they did not get six point nine, you could reasonably expect that the school committee would then have to go back, figure out, do they need to, do they want to get to that lower number? Any lower number would cause them to make changes to the configuration. That, that, those aren't absolutes, but it, that's how you could, you can consider the money versus the configuration. There is no direct correlation, but you can get there by just understanding six point nine is the number that they, that it's the school committee's number.
So.
So, so, so to kind of answer your question, um all the pre-K goes to Templeton Center. Uh there's about ballpark seventy-four pre-K students between the, they, they have it broken up into two classes, but I think it works different. I think it's on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, uh Tuesday, Thursday, so it's not really thirty-seven kids in the class. Uh at Templeton Center, the um, I'm just gonna try to average this. The average class size of a kindergarten is gonna be about thirteen students. Uh first grade is about twenty-three, second grade is twenty-two, third grade is twenty, twenty-three?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, now you got one down here. Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh fourth grade is twenty-four and fifth grade is a little bit higher at, at twenty-five. At Phillipston, they're gonna have one grade of each, so they're gonna have um I gotta find the right number. Phillipston, Phillipston kindergarten's about fourteen, which includes one student from Templeton. Uh first grade will be eighteen. Um now, I'm, I'm not breaking it down by Templeton, Phillipston, school choice. Uh but the, I have those numbers if anyone needs them. Second grade's about eighteen, third grade sixteen, fourth grade sixteen and uh fifth grade is sixteen. And, and what that's basically doing ma'am is it's having Phillipston kids go to Phillipston. Any of the, I believe, and, and Mrs. Hughes can correct me, uh any of the Templeton kids that want to go, or any of the Templeton kids that are slated to go to Phillipston, it's because they want to, they're not being forced to go there. And I think that's kind of, you don't want Templeton kids forced to go to.
Well, and I don't want the large class sizes.
Okay, right. So, so it's a, it's a, it's a very tough decision. So, so by allowing an additional forty-plus kids into school choice above what they've had in recent years, um it's allowed them to put four more classes in of varying grades, um and which brings the class sizes down.
I think if I may.
You may.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify because when you talk about bringing more kids in, um the way that we've done strategically is on Monday, when we met and came up with our plans, we have added an additional teacher back to Templeton Center as Mr. LaJoy already mentioned, which gives us the class sizes he just presented, right? The additional students that we're looking to bring in that are considered school choice or out of district non-resident students um would be, we would open a second, a second is gonna be a, an extra kindergarten classroom. Um we are not adding additional school choice students into any of the Templeton Center classrooms. If any new school choice student wants to come in the district, it would be in the Phillipston Elementary School. So we're not adding more children to Templeton Center. I just wanna let you know that those forty kids aren't all being thrown into Templeton Center. The kindergarten classroom will be there, but they're funding their own teacher and their own power to work there, um to support them. So we've already given them the resources um that they need without overburdening the other classrooms. So I hope that, that answers your question then?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, of course. After looking at, just like all of you, we, we get to the, we, we, I've been following this, what's happening in Phillipston, what's happening in town. I looked at this as those are the us that are, I hear today will understand some stuff. We, we presented some stuff so you understand it. But when people come to the special town meeting, I think there's going to be a question about transparency, credibility of the superintendent and the school committee. Why do I say that? Because if, like myself, they viewed what happened in Templeton, it's, he's on the record as saying the average class size in Templeton was going to be twenty-eight. Now, it's going to be less than that. So I, I think there's some, gonna be some folks that are going to end up having some problems as far as credibility of what's going on. This has been an ongoing issue. It should have been uh addressed much earlier in my estimation, way before we got into this. I, I was one of the people that spoke about, about this at the advisory. They're saying that the town and the schools should have got together long before we went to annual town meeting and it ended up working out something less than what they had come in, the uh, the nine hundred, almost a million dollar override for us. I thought it would be best in the, the town's benefit as well as the schools, if they had come in less earlier on. It didn't happen. So there's gonna be some credibility issues I see with what, what has transpired this, this far. The reason I wanted this to be brought up is because some, I know I watched it. Some of you probably watched Phillipston too, is to take and see what's going on in that committee. There's a lot of unhappiness by a number of people in both communities for different reasons. That's why when I talk to our newest member, I says, this town has a very difficult decision. It's town, voters and on this committee as to what we have to recommend. And I wanted to take and make that clear as to wh- why I would end up seeing how this is gonna end up going in my, my recommendation when it comes to that.
Okay, so, so I would say that I, I don't believe that there's a credibility issue. If, remember, these numbers are based on opening the school choice. If you wanna just take that, that school choice that they voted on Monday out, those numbers are going back up to twenty-eight kids per class. So those are the numbers that we got last week that uh Mrs. Geister sent me. That was the original class sizes that we got.
Well, the superintendent did say this, the, the school choice people would be going to Phillipston. He made that very clear. I mean, that's why I said that's a credibility issue because, or what is said in the past.
Okay, so, but remember, the school committee had, I believe, one or two meetings where residents of Templeton and Phillipston wanted their kids going to their school and the school choice people did not wanna go to Phillipston. And if they don't wanna go there and they choose to go back to their district, that's money that we lose, okay? So, they tried to come up with a solution, which they did, whether you agree with it or not, it's obviously up to you. But it did not create any additional budget request to add those classes.
I understand that.
Okay, so I don't think it's a credibility issue. I think it's the superintendent, the school committee listening to people, okay? That, this is sort of outside of the six point nine number of trying to keep everybody where they wanna be because school choices, you know, five years ago, we had more kids school choice in and out of this district than we did in. Now it's almost two to one or three to one kids coming in than going out, or I'm not sure the exact numbers, but it's, and I think that's a credit to the school committee, to the, especially the, well, the, the superintendent and the teachers and staff especially at this, all the schools from K through twelve. Okay, people wanna come to Templeton or the Narragansett Regional School District to go to school to educate their kids. They don't like it when you're, somebody's credibility. Mr. Chair. Mrs. Matson?
Um I just wanted to say that there's definitely not a transparency uh issue on the school committee's part because all of our um meetings have been open. And as far as the classroom sizes, we talk openly about all of that, all, all of our issues that we've had, we talked about, um and our meetings are taped. And you can view everything that we talked about. And um as far as that being transparent, I don't know how else we could be any more transparent unless you physically came to our meeting and listened. Um and, and I think that's another issue is that people don't, don't view the, view the meetings when they come to the meetings. They don't understand, they don't understand the town's budget, they don't understand the school's budget. And the only time that anybody is up in arms is when it's this time of year when the budget and town meeting is, is, is here and um this type of crisis is, is arises. Um you know, I think people just really need to be more um involved in their town and their town government and, and learn what um what it is to be a resident of, of a small community and um to do what they can. Um but going back to the, being transparent, um Dr. Casavan uh does basically what he will of the school committee do, uh tells him to. Um I think Dr. Casavan has been a super superintendent. Um leaps and bounds over what we've had in the past. I've been on the school committee for ten years. And I can honestly say that he is hands down the best superintendent I have worked with. And uh for any resident that has said that we should fire him, I, I, I don't even know what to say to you. That, that, that's ridiculous, ridiculous. Brought in more revenue um than any other superintendent that we've had.
Let, let me, let me just make it clear. I didn't say that the transparent, it wasn't transparent. I said the perceived transparency and credibility. That's a totally different issue as to what I'm, what I'm talking about. What's people perceive, what they've heard thus, thus far and what the re- uh the actuality is, that's totally different. And they will vote on what they have perceived, not on what is actually happening. That happens time and time again. Unfortunately.
And can I just respond to that? I'd just like to say that I totally agree with what you're saying. And I think that that is the job of all of our committees, okay? And the title of these meetings is to get the information and to clarify those, those misconceptions. To make sure that the correct information gets out there, that all the information gets out there. That's part of our jobs.
I mean, I, I would say that uh I was kinda clued into a couple of Facebook, Facebook pages, which I swore I would not actually comment on, but I couldn't take it because there was so much misinformation on those pages and, you know, like, and, and I'm not pointing at you ma'am, but where you thought there could be an override. I mean, people were convinced if we said this six point nine number and we voted yes, that it was gonna be a tax override. And it's like, no, it's not how it works. So, um I try to be as informed as I can uh when I make a decision and just ask that the town residents, the information is there. It's all public. All select boards, school committee, our meetings, they're open to the public. I mean, this is, I've been on the advisory committee a little over a year. This is more people that have been in one of our meetings than the whole other year combined. And that's because Will's wife doesn't show up. She can't, but she was a great supporter of ours. So, um the information is there, you just gotta go find it. You just can't think that your, your town, your school committee, your Board of Selectmen, uh the town administrator are trying to stick it to you. They can only do with what they have. You can't get blood from a stone.
I have to take and reiterate what the chairman said is, this is the largest amount of people at a pre-town meeting that I've seen and I've been on for quite a while, since two thousand and thirteen and fourteen and those earlier years. Since then, I mean, I, when I first got on, we had pre-town meetings that we had unfortunately over three nights and it was well attended by the community. We had to take and end up having them basically in, in the school and the, and, and the cafeteria and also in, in the, in the kiva because we had that many people attend. Since that time, for whatever reason, and I, I have said what I thought was the reason, but that's not what we're, we're here for. It's fallen off. So it's nice to take and see at least some people coming to take and end up seeing what, what's, what we, you know, what we have to take and end up dealing with.
Um so at that, um is there any more comments on Article One, questions? Ma'am?
Where's my setup? M Street, Baltimore. I have a question. If it gets approved, six nine, six four.
Yep. Which one?
Either one.
Yeah.
Either one. Does that budget or that amount ever go down for the school committee? As one thing to do for a year?
I can't answer, no. I, I can tell you, I believe, no.
Yeah.
Okay. Um it's like if someone gave you a budget for your household budget and gave you more than you needed, you're gonna keep, you're gonna, you're gonna spend to that level. Um and I, and that's not to imply that our school committee and our district are spending wildly. They are making cuts to get to the six point nine number. Um but.
If I may share, I think the issue is that with the budgets, like the school has to deal with the district, there are fixed costs and then there are uh uh unfixed.
Discretionary.
Discretionary, thank you. And, and there's very little discretionary expense uh with the district based on rules and stuff they have to do and all these various things. So, is a budget ever gonna go down? Not likely because there's so little room available to allow it to.
So, I would say that the, what I personally believe is the one unknown where it could potentially go down is we don't know what it's really gonna cost to operate Templeton Center. Now, I'm not saying.
At this late date?
No, because honestly, um and when I say that, I mean like energy costs, okay? And is a one-year a good sample? Maybe not, because what if we have a mild winter? I thought this past winter was somewhat mild. But when they, when they were, there's a lot of numbers out there of how much oil they're gonna need and electricity and all this. I was told they had to pad the number based, there was a, a committee that told them and they padded the number by thirty percent.
Because?
Because they don't know. So they wanna make sure that they're, it's covered.
Not to, not to pound this to death, but if I may make a comment
Sure.
on that. This, in, in terms of uh energy usage.
Yep.
There's no reason that they couldn't come very close to the amount of gallons or kilowatts.
Yep.
But they cannot control the cost of those gallons and kilowatts.
Yes, true. Okay, so there's obviously formulas of if I have five thousand square feet and this many students and this much electronics producing this much heat, um you can say it takes this much to cool or this much to heat, yes. There's a formula that they use to come up with it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it sound that they, oh, that's a good number.
Thirty percent is.
Okay, so, so the building, the company that built the building had to give them all that information, okay? So, so they have to make a decision based on that. But until you actually operate something, like we, if you buy a car, okay, and, and the sticker says you're gonna get forty miles to the gallon on the highway, but you're only getting thirty-six, you really don't know that until you've had the car for six or eight months.
To, to, to get some good data on there. I beg to differ.
Okay.
I, I, I understand where the gentleman's coming from because uh some of you probably don't know the gentleman. I, I had the pleasure of knowing him from way back. He was on the advisory committee years ago, uh back in the early two thousands. Uh we did have some figures a number of years ago where we had the, the energy usage for this building, Templeton Center and also Bolandville Elementary. Those schools basically are, are not energy efficient. So I, 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 I hear what the gentleman's saying and I kind of, I have to agree with him on some, some of the points that he's making. The energy efficiency, efficiency of the new building should be much better than we have.
Absolutely.
And I would expect the costs to be less.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. I absolutely a hundred percent agree with that. But for your first year, for your budget, you have to have a predictive number. It's just simple. And in fact, you probably need two or three years of data to kind of say, okay, you know what? That number's kind of settled right around the X amount of dollars a year. There's, it's not an exact science. It's, it's, it's certainly, um, it's certainly, you can calculate it. But, you know, anyone that does ca, anyone that does calculations, any engineers, and you know this, Will, they always put a little bit extra in. They always do. Not thirty percent. Mr. Marks?
Can, can I, look, I'm actually a facilities manager for the state of Massachusetts. I, 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 I designed and build buildings for the state, okay? So I totally agree with what you're saying about the calculations for the efficiency of the building. I think the unknown comes in is how the building is operated, okay? We don't know when the children come in, if the doors are going to be open as they're filing in for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, things like that. It's the outside conditions on how the building is operated. When you calculate those things, you do it on a, on how the building is designed to operate. But as you're loading in the kitchen equipment, the food coming in, is the door open for an extra half hour? So those are the unknowns, the variables that you just don't know. Um, so I, I hope that helps.
That does. Thank you.
And I'd also like to add to that, when we came up with the estimates for the utilities on the new building, we took the estimates that the consulting group gave us, which didn't include all of the utilities by the way. It was missing, I believe, water and perhaps sewer. Um, so the number they gave didn't even include that. We also ran some internal models to look at, okay, I believe it's a forty-three percent size wise of the middle and high school complex. Tried to do some calculations to justify, again, what the consultants were telling us. And our numbers actually came out rather close when you factored in water and sewer. So we tried to, to also make sure that the data the consultants were giving us was, um, on target. Um, so, and again, with the factor of these unknown pieces in there, um, again, I, I do agree that it would probably take three years to get a good baseline. Um, but to Mr. DeJoy's point, you know, is there, is that a potential area where we could see savings? Yes, if that, and the building is truly is energy efficient and we operate as energy efficiently as we can, then that may be an area where there, there could be savings to go back to the original question of, of the number.
So, so not to, to pick on Chief Bennett, but as you know, we're going to be opening the, the addition to the, the well-needed addition to the police station this year. His energy costs are going up. He's had to predict what they're going to be, but he doesn't really know. It's all predictive.
If I may.
And I really don't want to get into argument about energy consumption.
We won't do that, then. It's not Chief Bennett's, uh, responsibility to try to determine that. We hire...
Nor is it the school district.
We hire, uh, what'd you say? You called them consultants.
Right, and that's what they did.
Pay them a lot of money. They give us this information.
That's what they did.
And if we can't rely on their information, we shouldn't be paying them as much.
But the information is based on the thirty percent. The information that they gave us is based on the thirty percent.
Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. I want to wait for Mr. May to get back, so... So, one last time, any more questions? Chief, I didn't mean to pick on you. Uh, any, um, any more questions on Article One? I'd rather wait for Bob to get back before we, before I entertain a motion.
We can, we can, we can do that in our general association. We can do it in the general if you want.
I think we'll talk about it.
Because we can end up making, uh, if that, if that's presented, whatever's presented at any meeting, whatever we do. If those are presented at a special town meeting or something else, we can take and pull that application.
We could, or we could just say the advisory committee has now had a table. We'll look at this, so we add no comment or something to that effect. Okay, all right, so then we, we, it's good to have his number. We're waiting for you, Bob. Okay.
Thank you.
So at this time, um, I'll entertain a motion as to, um, the advisory board recommendation on Article One.
I'll make a motion on Article One to vote for a no recommendation.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? So if you vote yes, you're voting that we will recommend a no vote. That we'll vote no for this budget.
It doesn't have to be unanimous, right?
For this one.
It doesn't have to be unanimous, right?
No, no, Debbie?
No.
Well?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
And, um, because I have a family member that works for the school district, I think it's prudent for me to abstain. So we're... Can't, can't legally.
No.
Can't legally do that. She's not a, a member. What's that? We don't have to break a tie.
Yeah, we don't.
I mean, our recommendation could be to the town that we, uh, so we're just making a recommendation to the town? So, so I don't believe that we have to break a tie.
But you can invoke the law of necessity.
I'm sorry?
I, I believe you can, you can.
It's not, it's not, it's not, this doesn't take precedent.
No, I mean, I think we can do two, two, one abstain, or two, two, two yes, two no abstain.
Yes.
That's our recommendation to the voters if people have the opportunity to ask us why.
It would not be the first time.
No, I mean, I've seen three, three votes before. Okay, wow.
That, that hour went by quickly.
Yeah, last night was a lot more painful. Okay, Article Two. Um, Article Two is, uh, relates to the two thousand nine general fund operating or OpEx budget. It's to see the town will vote to amend its actions under Article twenty-six of the two thousand nineteen annual town meeting to further authorize the board of selectmen to make such reductions in such amounts and in such departments as it shall seem necessary and in the best interest of the community in the amount by which the town's assessed share of the cost of the Narragansett Regional School District for FY twenty shall exceed, if any, the sum of six million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and, five hundred fourteen dollars and no cents. And B, to transfer the additional sum of twenty thousand dollars and no cents to a total, to total in aggregate and the sum of two hundred and seventy thousand and no cents.
If, if I might, um, I have a question with this. Um, because I, I believe it should say where we're transferring the money from, the two seventy and the twenty?
Mr. May is correct. The, um, to transfer the additional sum of twenty thousand dollars and no cents from the receipts, uh, the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation. Thank you, Bob, for catching that. Uh, and the sum of two hundred and seventy thousand then becomes apparent because the original motion was to transfer two fifty from that account. So we'll send out a second draft. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. So does everybody understand that originally we had voted at town meeting to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ambulance receipts? What this, uh, article is asking is to add twenty thousand dollars to that two fifty for a total of two seventy.
But it's also allowing you to make any additional cuts that you guys want with us put out as well.
We don't want any cuts. It allows the board of, if the six point nine number passes at a special town meeting, it gives the board of selectmen and town administrator the number they need, uh, or to make cuts. That's the, the, that's the operating budget the town has to work with.
Are those the cuts we've already seen, like forty-seven thousand from the senior center and...
Though, all the cuts you have seen are proposed. There's been no cuts. There's been some, um, preemptive actions that really aren't, well, it is going to start affecting the town here very shortly. And I'm going to ask the chiefs to, uh, if they would. Um, so you're right, there have been, the talk of losing a police officer, cuts to fire department, uh, cuts to the senior center, okay? Again, none of these have, but, you know, the, the board of selectmen, TA, have to, where do they get the money from? And they've gone out to the different departments and said, okay. So, um, I know Chief Bennett has, um, a couple of words that he'd probably like to just state what it means to the town if we have to cut a police officer.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is if that sixty-nine, whatever it is...
Six point nine.
Uh, passes, are these cuts to the police department and the senior center still going to go through? Is that a given?
I don't, um...
Six point nine, you're saying?
Yes, no, I know what, I know what you're saying. Those are the cuts that have been presented by the town administrator to the board of selectmen for consideration to act, to total three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Now, the town has a fund that they can, so the difference is really four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. The town has an overlay fund that I believe they would use about a hundred thousand dollars of that to limit the number of cuts. But they're going to have to make cuts in the, in, in the area of three hundred and eighty-six, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And those cuts that you have seen on that, that spreadsheet is what the town administrator has brought to the board of selectmen. It doesn't mean that they can't go back and look at things and say, okay, we can do, maybe we can take from here or we can take from here. They've done a lot of work. It's, they didn't just, you know, pick things.
No, I realize that, but what I'm saying is if we do the sixty-nine, there are going to be cuts.
Absolutely, to town services.
If we do the sixty-four, it's going to be deeper.
No, if you do the sixty-four, it's the other way. If you do the sixty-four, there's no cuts to town services. The six point four, there's no cuts to town services. The problem we have is the school committee has to certify that number.
Could you tell me what the overlay fund is? What is that?
I'll defer to Mr. Terenzini to...
The town is required to set aside a given amount of money each and every year to cover applications for abatements, refunds that we have to make, uh, and in some cases, um, taxes that don't necessarily get paid in the correct manner. We start by, based upon experience, uh, with a calculation that we should take two and one-half percent of the amount of our base taxes that we expect to raise. We start building our budget there and our six million, four ninety-one, oh seventy comes out of that number. That's how that grows. The number in the second article, there is a safety factor there. We could go as low as about one and a half percent of this gross collections. So while the selectmen have offered the six million, four ninety-one, oh seventy, that consists, or that is going to be their motion, I should say. Um, um, that is based upon, as Mr. DeJoy said, the fiscal year nineteen budget plus two and a half percent. Well, if worse came to worse, we could reduce that overlay set aside. This is cash that actually goes in a separate account. We pay out all of those abatements, all those applications for refunds. Uh, and then if there's something left over, there's a, I'm not going to take you down that road up here tonight. If we do reduce that, there's about another hundred thousand dollars we could do. And the chief, uh, has asked that we consider increasing the transfer from the ambulance, uh, receipts reserved for appropriation. And Mr. May remains my, uh, proofreader here. Uh, he does that quite well for us. Um, so the bottom line here is if the reserve comes down, the hundred thousand dollars, if the ambulance comes up twenty thousand, it's conceivable that this town could pay as much as six million, six eleven, five hundred and fourteen dollars. And there is not a single dollar cut to the town budget. That's, that's the default line. That's the tripwire. Every dollar that the school district subsequently gets in, at whatever point along the process, above that number is a cut to the general fund operating budget. When that cut happens, how far we are into the year, that's why it's impossible to say with any degree of certainty on what the specific cuts will be. We may know what the dollar will be. Take the school district's assessment, minus six million, six eleven and change, that's the number that has to be cut. Tell me when in the year all of the dust settles, we can start talking about much more detailed specifics. Although I do want to commend the two chiefs for getting out front of it because as you go into the year, you lose the flexibility to get that done. So that's what that fund is for. It is mandatory. It is statutory. It must be approved by Department of Revenue on what we call the recap sheet at the time of setting the budget. There is limited discretion as to how low it can go.
I would also add of that, that three hundred and eighty-six thousand-ish dollar number, the further we go down without a certified town-voted school budget, that number goes up. Because some of the cuts won't be made, hopefully, um, and so that's money that's been expended that will have to be found. So, uh, one thing before I ask the chief to the impact, uh, last night I was here at the select board meeting and I, and I want to commend the, the officers of the police department because they know, they do not want a, a police officer cut. And they have offered up, I will not go into any details or anything, but they have offered up some, uh, benefits that they're allowed as an offset to that. And, and I want to commend them. I'm absolutely against taking anything away from any of the police officers. Their job's too difficult as it is. So, um, with that, chief, would you like to explain what the, the cut to, um, to the police department?
So, as everybody has been advised, we're going to have to make cuts. One way or another, there's going to be cuts coming down the road. Now, uh, we met approximately three weeks ago and we were advised that certain departments, what our department's cuts were going to be. I was advised that the cuts of my department was going to be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is roughly ten percent of my budget. My budget is one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, having taken my number, um, I went back, I looked at my budget. That's one guy. That's a concession that I went to the union for and asked for, which they agreed to. And also another cut to my budget. What exactly does that mean towards coverage to the town of Templeton? Effective July twenty-second, there will be no cruiser coverage from three AM to seven in the morning, seven days a week. There will be only one officer coverage, seven AM to nine AM, Monday through Friday. From five PM to seven PM, there will only be one officer coverage, Monday through Friday. On Saturday and Sunday, there will be only one officer coverage, seven AM to eleven AM. The SRO schedule will change from seven to three to nine to five, Monday through Friday. Also put in was a request that the liquor establishments change their closing or sale of alcohol from two AM to one AM to help settle the town before officers go off duty at night.
Commissioner, let's just ask our own.
School resource officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have additional cuts?
Additionally, one of the other cuts, other than, I'll be more specific, other than asking the union for a concession, is that I have cut all part-time dispatch shifts, which doesn't sound like a lot. But when you have a certified dispatcher who is not able to keep their skills up, it causes great concern and a lack of security or ability for them to do their jobs and dispatch properly. Our dispatch center is highly technical. We ask ten times more of our dispatches than any other city or town around us. And for them not to be able to keep their skills up on a regular basis is detrimental to our officer safety. Not only my officers, the fire department. Not only my officers, the fire department. Any questions?
Can we ask our question for chief?
It sounds like that's a lot of risk and, and, and liability to the town, uh, if we have to, if we have to do that.
No, it's not an if, it is a definite. Because if I do not make these cuts now, that's ten percent of my budget right now. If I wait until November to make it, now it's fifteen to twenty percent of my budget, then it's two officers.
I, I guess my point was, uh, unless we can find the money some other place, which is less liable, liability for the town, uh, in the long run, it might be cheaper.
Unfortunately, these cuts will go into effect until there is a definite that the money does not have to come out of my budget.
And you're right, it, it exposes the town to, to, uh, more liability. And more to the point, I think what the chief said is, I, I, I think it puts more risk on the officers and the, and, and the fire department responding to calls.
And revenue for the, uh, establishments.
That, that is another factor, um, that really wasn't discussed last night. I mean, I think before they, I don't know what the rule is, I think they probably have to discuss that with the, I don't know if you can just arbitrarily, not arbitrarily do it, but just do that.
Done with it, we're, it's, it's an action item, we're working it.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions for the chief of police?
Good job.
Thank you, chief. Chief Dickey?
Um, so, just like, uh, Chief Bennett stated, you know, we were asked to cut some money, the, uh, the total for the fire department was gonna be seven, four thousand dollars, which is in the area of, uh, one person for us. If I cut one of my fire, full-time firefighters, that would put us in jeopardy with the state to lose our, uh, ambulance service. So, instead of taking and cutting a position, uh, what I chose to do was, uh, I, I went to my, I, I went with my full-timers, and they work a rotating shift, and they do forty-eight hours. So I took from a forty-eight hour average to a, brought them down to a forty-two hour work week, saving approximately thirty thousand dollars out of that. I had a day a week that, my God, none of my people worked, and I had part-timers that worked that day. I cut that part-time shift, uh, out of the budget, and brought my daytime firefighter that was the partner of whoever was on shift, um, and put him onto a rotating schedule with the other full-time fire, uh, his other full-time firefighters. So we went from three shifts to four shifts, and a forty-two hour work week instead of a forty-eight hour work week. By eliminating the day shift that takes myself, I become the second responder during the day. So, I will be part of the active crew, not having the, uh, office open for the community, uh, to be able to do inspections, uh, plan reviews, inspections in some of the bigger projects quite as often as you can. My hours are also less than my daytime person was, he was at forty-eight hours, working twelve-hour days, where I am an eight-hour person, so that does open a window from three o'clock in the afternoon, uh, until six o'clock at night, where there is not a second person, Monday through Friday. After six o'clock at night, we have always been, uh, uh, call people, uh, residents, uh, some of our members that aren't full-timers, they call the call firefighter, call M T, they respond from home. So, from six o'clock at night till six in the morning, these are the people that come with the full-timers, and, and help the full-timer to create the ambulance crew or create the fire crews. With, uh, the police department not being able to have the officers on at night, that puts a, uh, safety concern on us. I cannot have a single person responding to somebody's house, uh, alone. So they will now be waiting for that person coming from home to meet them, either at the station and get in the ambulance, uh, with them there, or if there is a safe place they can meet, like the other fire station, or school parking lot, or something like that, where they can meet up and then join to go in, but they will be going in as pairs. If there is a call that happens to be, uh, a safety concern, even for the two members, uh, like a domestic or drug overdose or something, we will not go in. I cannot put my people in that kind of danger without police protection. Um, the police department has always been very good with backing us up with that. So, I, I can't do that, put them in harm's way. So at that point in time, if the plan is that the state police are gonna come in or whatnot, if they're available, that's what we'll be waiting for. Um, I do have a, a, a question out to Boston, the Office of Emergency Medical Services, to get a, uh, a ruling on that, and what other style calls, uh, for our safety, to make sure of, along with all the, uh, with those cuts, and me being out of the office more, being part of the active crew, I'm also forced to cut my administrative assistant hours from eighteen hours a week to nine hours a week. So, right now, the way the budget's been, is our office is open five days a week. If my administrative assistant's not there, I try to be there, 'cause I have the crew to go out. The fire department office will be closed, uh, three days a week, it will be open two days a week to the community. Uh, and then when I can answer the phone and return phone calls in the absence, uh, other times, we'll be able to do inspections.
Thank you, chief.
What inspections?
Uh, so with that, the inspections, we had gone, we used to do inspections one day a week, we moved them up to two days a week, the crew is helping me. Uh, inspection times are gonna be able to go down, uh, could cause delays in home sales, in, uh, opening new buildings, new pizza place getting set to open, a, a move. Uh, so inspections are going down to one day a week on Tuesdays, and I can be able to do other days. And even on that day, it's myself and the firefighter, paramedic on duty. If I have a full slate of schedules all, uh, all day for inspections, and we get a couple of calls, then those inspections have to be carried along with the following.
Mr. Terenzini?
Uh, thank you, chief. Uh, one of the things that the chief did not comment on, but it's extremely important to note, um, it sounds, okay, so the guy goes from forty-eight hours to forty-two hours. Yeah, but let's not forget, we already pay one of the lowest rates in Legion. Uh, that, uh, employee, those employees, who lose six hours of pay, or approximately one hundred and fifty dollars a week, which is seventy-five hundred dollars reduction in their annual pay. So that will have the potential to create some retention problems, as well as recruitment problems. And it's important that, you know, it's not just forty-eight to forty-two, there's possible side effects. I'd like to address the highway department, if I might, and then I'll leave the others. Uh, in the highway department, as a major department, they've been asked to take, um, a substantial cut as well. Um, it is the effect of, uh, eliminating one full-time, uh, equipment operator. That means that the plow routes will have to be reorganized, or we'll have to, uh, hopefully find some contractors, so we'll tackle that plow route. Uh, we, we hope to find some contractors, so we don't have to rearrange the, the routes, we hope we don't have to extend out, uh, time, but, you know, just, uh, understand that every time a route, uh, gets slipped out an extra mile, it takes that much longer, uh, to get around it, which means the snow's gotten that much, uh, further ahead. And there will be a twenty thousand dollar cut roughly, uh, to material, um, supplies and the like, whether that's coal patch, culvert pipe, um, the five thousand dollar piece for the ball-fault, um, loader. Um, you, you'd be surprised at how much some of this stuff costs. So the major departments, um, have taken, frankly, the major hit. Um, the others, uh, you know, we really, uh, can't talk about much, till we know
Right.
what, how much, and, and when, but those are just, uh, I think, the broad strokes. Thank you.
I'd, I'd also comment on the fact that, uh, if the roads are delayed in plowing, that could, uh, increase response time for our first responders. Um, they, just because they have, um, four-wheel-drive vehicles doesn't mean they can just go at any speed, they still have to drive within the conditions. Um, I think one of the things that most people can notice is, these cuts to the town affect everybody in town, the town of Templeton. Um, it's not just certain group of people, it's everybody. Uh, do you have any, any comments or questions on, uh, either the chiefs, from the public, before I open it to the board? Ma'am?
Kim Richard-Gobble, I just have a question for the police chief. From three AM to seven AM, since we're not gonna have cruiser coverage, can you just let people know what that's gonna be?
So, what that'll mean is, I will send a letter off to Lieutenant Millet at the Athol Barracks, and I will advise him that we, we will be going off duty at three AM. I will request that he, should he have a trooper available, answer our calls. Uh, but you have to understand that the Athol Barracks at night only has three troopers on duty, and they patrol from Westminster Town, Westminster-Fishburg Town Line to the King Philip Bridge. So, their response time, if they can respond, is not gonna be the response time of an officer on duty.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any other comments from the audience, sir?
Just a question, general question. Uh, is there a balance in the emergency reserve?
Stabilization fund?
Yes.
Yes. And, and, and we had a discussion, I, because, I, I brought that up last night. Um, we've finally gotten to a point, I, I'm not saying don't use it, I think that's kinda what the fund is for, but the previous Board of Selectmen, this Board of Selectmen, with the town administrator have done a really good job of bringing that fund from basically zero, four years ago, to where it's at now. I don't have the exact numbers, um, it, it is potentially an option to be discussed, I would think. Um, uh, there, there are other things that can be discussed, but when you don't really know what you have to cut, and how dire it is, then, and, and I'll, you know, Mr. Curry's words from last night, these are dire cuts to the town. There is no good news.
Liability, that's all, I'm just, what's the balance? Roughly?
So.
Five, five sixty.
Uh, it's roughly five hundred and sixty, um, if, if I might, it's roughly five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The challenge is, this is one-time money that you would be using once this year, but they still need that again next year, uh, and the next. So if this was an economic climate, um, a downturn such as, uh, two thousand and three, when the state cut, uh, its budget, one year of local aid, okay, now you can see a path to clearing back out. But I wanna be clear, uh, and I think Mr. Bennett, uh, did it very well last night. The issue here is the state of Massachusetts is not delivering the aid on transportation that it should. If it fully funded the transportation budget, this district will be getting about seven hundred thousand dollars more.
Including special aid, that's not part of the reimbursement.
Depending upon how it goes, but certainly a substantial.
Certainly, many hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Certainly, a substantial part of the way, depending upon how one looks at that number. And although it has been, some would say, treated tightly in terms of being on a whole harmless budget because of the number of students, the state has not substantially changed the education funding formula since nineteen ninety-three. Uh, now, I know that, uh, you're on the board, I believe, of Mars?
Yes.
Um, we've had conversations with Mars, I'm under instructions, uh, from the board, uh, for this community and, and others to try to become more actively involved. Um, and when you attend, uh, the town meeting, you will see a letter addressed to Governor Baker, Senator Gobi, um,
Representative Wips.
Representative Wips, I, I don't know what it says yet, 'cause fortunately, but the chairman, uh, uh, took that task on. But that'll be there for everyone to sign, to, uh, so we can get that off to people. And I certainly hope, uh, that when you attend, you'll pick one of those up and, and sign it, and leave that for us to package and get off. Because it's one thing for these five selectmen, or these advisory committee, to chat with the senator and say, we've got this issue. But if two hundred or three hundred Templeton people and, and some Phillipson people, they're gonna take more note, uh, of that. So, um, five hundred and sixty's there, we don't think it's a one-time event, we don't think it's a good use of the money.
How are the people gonna know that those sheets are there for us?
They'll be right on the tables as you check in. Uh, I will ask the modern day to wave it, um, as wildly as he can, uh, at least once, if not twice, if not thrice. Um, but as you come in, the, you pass the series of, uh, tables where you can pick up the warrant, and you have other information, and they'll be there for people to pick up. Uh, they will also, um, uh, once we have that letter, uh, we'll be creating a fillable online form that people can fill out as well.
You're gonna have, so you're gonna have somebody out there, say, here, grab one of these and read it?
Um, we're certainly gonna do our best, we'll, we'll do our best to distribute, that is why we are so.
Otherwise, people are gonna walk right by.
One final question?
Yep.
The, you talked about the overlay, that's the assessors', uh, Board of Assessors overlay. Do you have agreement with the Board of Assessors, I believe, have to sign off?
I, I would defer to the, uh, town administrator.
Um, the assessors have to sign off on the use of the account. They have to sign off, um, upon the request of the selectmen, uh, under statute, I believe they have fourteen days after getting exacted, to declare the surplus, uh, and we do work carefully, the finance team, Kelly, the treasurer, Luanne, in preparing that, uh, recap sheet, uh, in getting that in. So in terms of sign off, yes, they have to prepare the recap sheet, um, and they have to, uh, determine, um, how to spend the money. Um, but the, we work together, we work collectively, we've done this for, uh, the three, four recap sheets now that I've been here. And I think we have a system that works.
So to clarify, then, are the Board of Selectmen currently aware that you're planning on spending money from the overlay account?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and they're on board with that?
Well, they're on board with being part of the safety valve, let me put it that way. Um, I would defer to the chairman to address that.
We're, we're looking for any tools that we possibly can do, uh, to reduce, buy down that risk. Um, so yes, we're fully aware of that, I think we've looked at, uh, at a lot of the different, um, we've had a lot of discussions, hours of meetings, and we're, I don't wanna make any of the cuts, you know, four hundred thou, up to four hundred thousand dollars worth of proposed cuts, yeah. I don't wanna make any of them, um, I don't want any gaps in public safety. Uh, we're in a tough spot, and it's not us and them, we're all in this together, we really are. It's just, it's costing them a little bit more because of the situation that they're in. And right now, that's forcing, is forcing us into a, uh, a situation where we have to compromise as best we can.
Understood, I'm just looking to, uh, our community has a history of waiting till the final hour before they realize, oh, shoot, need permission from these guys.
Right.
And just to avoid that from happening.
Yes, yes, sir, so, I can tell you, I, I, I was in the advisory committee, I've been through, at least, uh, where I've been responsible, one full-budget, uh, uh, scenario, and I, with eyes wide open.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, one other thing I'd like to say, I mean, I, we appreciate the chiefs and, and Mr. Terenzini talking about the highway department. One of the other big cuts that is a potential is to the council on aging. Uh, personally, I'm one hundred percent against this. Um, the council on aging is not a social club for our elderly. Um, it is kind of a lifeblood for them to keep, make sure they're moving, they're going, the, the staff there can bring in some funds, would you like that?
Um, I, Sula Joy, I work at the senior center, and there's something, right now, we're at two and a half staff, the half is activities, so, um, the, the proposal is to drop us to half, whatever, but I just wanted people to know that we get one milligrant money, that pays all our, our supplies and all that stuff to, to run the building, but if we don't do the reports and do the statistics and do all that, which we won't have time to do, um, and we're currently doing other jobs that were dropped in the last two years, you're not gonna get refunded. Our transportation is, we do a bill every month for Mark, we give that money back. But we're not gonna have that kind of transportation, we're not gonna have the time to do all that. Um, that's one thing. The other thing is, I really, really, really want people to look at, um, not cutting meals on wheels. Just this week, we had a gentleman, we went to his house, he was in. Just this week, we had a gentleman, we went to his house, he was in congested heart failure. Um, we, we have shut-ins, we have people that don't have family around, and that, we're, it's only, you know, seven thousand dollars or eight thousand dollars that we spend. And it's really important that we see those people, cause someone may not, they could lay there on the floor if they're living alone. Um, I just, the two positions that are cut to halftime and Meals on Wheels is basically the cuts we're getting. Now, like I said, a lot of our stuff is covered through the formula, correct? We get twenty thousand dollars from the state, it's twelve dollars per senior, so with the new census, we should be getting more for next year. MART reimburses our transportation, but it's all stuff that people have to do statistics and fill out paperwork, it just doesn't come to us. So, if you don't have the people in there recording this stuff and getting it, you're not gonna get that, that money from them. Um, and, and I think the transportation and the Meals on Wheels is really important. I also know, I know cutting it and, um, cutting the positions and stuff, you still have disability or whatever you have, but, um, in the center, the, no one takes health insurance at the Senior Center, the two and a half, well, the half staff gap. Um, so you're not, it's gonna, you really don't have anything else to cut then, if you take away those half positions, there's nothing to cut. And I can't honestly see the people staying for halftime, people, you know, people can't do that. But I just, especially the Meals on Wheels, really. And the guys and the fire and the police department are awesome, we work with them all the time, um, I don't know what we'd do without them, so it's not one or the other.
So, I think if I hear you correctly, the potential cut to Senior Center could end up costing the town a lot more on reimbursement, so it'd be a net sum.
Well, if you're counting that money for transportation, cause you're still keeping the, the Senior Center open, you're not gonna get that reimbursement, so...
Uh, I would ask, um, Ms. King, does that kinda cover your letter that you sent to the Board of Selectmen? Thank you.
Of course, another thing too, if Meals on Wheels aren't checking on these people, then you're gonna have more ambulance calls. So, it kinda spirals along. Plus, if the Senior Center isn't open, like tomorrow in that extreme humidity, now that every senior has access to air conditioning, and if the Senior Center is there, they, they can get in and get cooled down for a while. Same thing in the middle of winter, not all of them can afford their heating bill, so they can turn the heat down during the day and go to the Senior Center and get warm. Plus, it was open, didn't they have to open when one of the buildings lost heat?
I was just gonna say, I had heard that one of the buildings had lost heat, I think it was last winter.
You know, um, the director and I were over there opening the building in case people needed to get warm.
So, like you said, it's more than, it's not a social thing, although social does help with depression. But it also serves a big health thing, where people can go not get depressed, they can get cooled, they can get heat. Um, it's a very necessity in this day and age.
It's been a very busy two weeks for me with the seniors, um, because of the heat and the humidity. So, you know, I'm calling family members, trying to get them on board, um, I've been to the hospital to see some of the seniors that don't have anyone to look out for them there. So, they're, it, it's a hard time, the summer and the winter especially. But, you know, if it's me or someone else, they just need someone and somewhere to go.
I think, I think it's so important that, as a community, we take care of what I consider our most vulnerable citizens, and that's the children and the, and, and the seniors. All right, so, Mr. Bennett?
Let me just, one quick thing, uh, for me anyway. Uh, I'd just like to reiterate something that's been said, and, and I probably said it too, it, I don't believe the fight or the argument is with the school committee. Uh, and, and their budget, yes, they have some wants that, you know, we could do without, just like Board of Selectmen or any city government. And if you take the time to research how they come about their curriculum, the things that are forced on them, it's, in a lot of instances, from different institutions, the state government, the federal government, and they say, well, and I'm making this number up, that's a million dollars' worth of cost. Are you gonna give us some, are you, who's paying for that? Hand it off to the local, local townspeople. And that's where it comes from, and as Mr. Terenzini, and I, I hammer this all the time, is the transportation cost and the chapter seventy, the school reimburse, reimbursement money from the state, that is about half, a little more than half of your budget or so, so, it's, it's up there. They gave this year an increase of thirty dollars per student. You're spending twelve, eleven, twelve thousand per student with all the costs involved, that's what it, it comes out to. Thirty dollars is what they give, and they tout that as they're doing a great job in the state government, and that's who I am mad at. And unfortunately, in my, the method to my madness is to go low and, and keep this pot stirring, because if we just, if it goes away, then they're gonna, the state, the fed, they're just gonna go, oh, well. See, they're all over it. Like, the mission of education, the legislature and the governor is who I'm mad at, and I want people to write, and we need to keep hammering this and keep the pressure on them. It's the only way we have a chance of changing this and stopping this every year, and it is a fight. I mean, it's, there's different words for it, but it comes down to, and they, the school committee gets the pie thrown at them because they're sitting there at the table. And it, it shouldn't be that way, but it comes to this. Templeton against Phillipston, Phillipston against Templeton, and we're both against the school committee. Why? Because the people east of four ninety-five can't get their act together. And I just hope people remember that when they go into town meeting and vote, however you vote, just show the hell up and vote, please. Thank you.
I just, thank you. Uh, board member comments? Go ahead, Will.
Yep. I'm, I've looked at the, the cuts, and I'm not happy with a lot of the cuts that are being proposed. I think there's other areas that can be cut. Training is one of them. Do I want, do I wanna see training in departments cut? No. To me, it would be less of, a less impact than, than having either a fire or policeman for Senior Center. I also looked at ours, they wanna take and end up taking money from the advisory. I don't recommend that because the emergency reserve, if we do have them, if we're forced to take and make cuts to the budget. All those entities, departments, come the end of the year, are gonna be looking, either during the year or whatever, for the emergency reserve. And to cut the emergency reserve is, again, very risky for this. My major thing here is, I don't like to take in, the way this is written is to give five people, basically, the selectmen, the ability to take and make the cuts. I would rather take and see the townspeople vote on where they wanna make the cuts, not five people, not us, per se. I think that the townspeople should make the cuts as to where they want. If they wanna end up cutting all of the, the training, et cetera, and administrative assistance within the community, fine. But to take and end up putting public safety, their, their own risk, they may choose to do that. They may choose not to take and end up seeing the Senior Center done. I don't know what those people would do, but I can, I cannot feel comfortable, the way this is written, to give five people the ability to make the cuts. I would like to see that, having a proposal at the annual town meeting, or the, the special town meeting here, as to what those cuts are, and have people say, yea or nay. Right then and there. Rather than say, okay, we're gonna make some cuts, and everybody says, go ahead, and then, we're gonna get flashback as to all those cuts from everybody and saying, oh, well, I didn't see that, I'm upset about that. No, you come to the special town meeting and you have your say-so as to where you wanna make those cuts. That's my objection to this particular article as it's written, per se. I understand that we may be forced to make the cuts, but I think the townspeople have more into this than the five selectmen or even our inputs. I would personally like to take and end up seeing a lot of the advisory, uh, monies that we end up going for training, et cetera, actually taken off rather than go into the emergency reserve. Take the majority of that and just say, okay, take, take, uh, 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 we got like about four thousand dollars between a couple of funds. Take fifteen, because we need to take and do certain things, we need to take and end up having, uh, for notices for pre-town, annual town meeting. We have to take and end up joining a, a association so that we get information that they can help us, help the community. Those are the bare minimum things that I see that we can end up affording, not the cut, cut from our budget, but not the emergency reserve. So, that's my, that's my, my thoughts, Mr., Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't know if anybody else wants to take and weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Uh, any other committee members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment, uh, um, I don't think, no matter how this comes out, anybody's gonna be happy. There's gonna be somebody upset no matter how this works. Um, cause the problem we have is there's not enough money for what we need to do, period. And I don't see how this gonna be in our future. Cause if you look at the numbers, they just don't seem to be working with the two and a half percent override, and you look at the salaries in town, Templeton, Phillipston, the school, um, raises, healthcare, that outdoes the two and a half percent for our increase every year. So, we're in a hole from the get-go.
Yep.
Um, you know, I believe Jeff's right, the seven hundred thousand dollars, um, that we're short, and I know there's change difference, but, um, you know, is huge. And it's been for sixty-five years, I think, since nineteen fifty-five, sixty-four years, that they haven't paid what they promised. I mean, that's our new school paid for. You know, I think it's time that people get ticked, you know? This seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, and I mean, nothing other, but it solves our problems. The money that's supposed to be given us. Um, so, yeah, it's easy to be mad at the school committee, it's easy to be mad at the advisory, it's easy to be mad at Carter, the selectmen, um... You know, but I think it's time that we got really upset with who's the cause. And it's the un, you know, the, the unfunded mandates and the, you know, the, just the unfunded transportation, just alone, one item. If that one item was fixed, we'd be in a different world in Templeton. Um, so that's it. I didn't see the meeting last night, I don't know if I double-talked anybody or whatever, but, uh... That's me.
Okay, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I do have one question, is that weird?
Absolutely.
On the Article Two, if people won't know, what does that mean, like, how does that move forward? I'm confused by that.
Um, so, I, I, uh, the question, as I understand, is what happens if Question Two fails?
Yeah.
Um, which gives me a nice segue into explaining why Question Two is phrased the way it is. Um, you'll vote on a school budget on Article One. They will certify a new budget. Um, if all the stars line up, uh, they'll certify a year number and everything's fine. Um, but they've been through, we've been going through this since October, and actually had budgets, draft budgets in February, fifteen, I believe, and final budgets in March. So, that has been something that the chair, uh, the chair of the select board, myself, everyone's been working hard at. The reason, uh, you would then go through a series of district meetings in which they would propose a number, the two communities would come together as if they were one. They'll propose that number, uh, and then the district meeting votes. Perhaps it passes, perhaps it doesn't. If it doesn't, they go back to the drawing board, there's a series of how many days they have to do it, and then there's a, a statute on how many days it takes to call a special town meeting. Uh, and hopefully, they get to a number locally. If they don't get to a number locally, then on or about December one, the Commissioner for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, he's not the Commissioner for the, you know, proper distribution of resources, he is the Commissioner of Education, will fix a number. So, if you get all the way to December before you get your number, it is then another thirty to forty-five days before the selectmen can agree a final solution, call a special town meeting, and try to get that budget adopted at the town meeting. And we can be, in worst case, into February before you have truly, um, a balanced town budget. And if you get that far, you cannot send out your tax bills and require people to pay them on February one. If your tax bills are not sent out in postmark by December thirty, you cannot collect the February quarter. You can hope the escrow companies will pay, you can beg, plead, urge people to pay, but they don't have to pay until May. So, the reason this article has been written the way it was is to try to give the selectmen the flexibility and the opportunity to respond as quickly as possible whenever that final number lands.
I may have missed it, does that mean that the, assuming that the question number one fails? If Question One passes, then that scenario doesn't have to take place?
If Question One passes as presented, there must be budget cuts.
Yes, but that doesn't involve discussion between the district and the town. You said they're gonna have to be...
No, then, then it's, then it's, then it's us, then it's up to us. They have the budget, they've certified, they're done at their end of things. And Margaret, please jump in if I missed a procedural step here somewhere.
I just wanna be clear, that's all. So, if the, if, if it passes, that's done, we have to deal with it. If it fails, Question Number One, then Number Two, you're saying it's kind of important that it passes to avoid the scenario you just described?
If Question One passes as presented, Question Two must pass. Otherwise, in forty-five days roughly, you will have to have a special town meeting, at which time then the select board would present a specific list of cuts, and the town meeting would go through it. So, you're another forty-five days into the great unknown. And that is why this question has been structured as it is, to be able to move as expeditiously and flexibly as possible, so that we don't get stuck in some very bad, uh, waters.
Uh, question for Kyra, I'm sorry.
Um, no, sir.
You, you had said, um, what, so, once, um, the, um, Commissioner comes in and gives a number in December, and then we would have to have another special town meeting somewhere around, um, January-ish?
If Question, Article Two were not to pass, and the Commissioner, if we got that far down the road, the Commissioner had to set a budget.
Yep.
So, on December one, we finally know your number. If Article Two does not pass, that means the select board must have a special town meeting, which in our community can take upwards of forty-five days. That means you blow past the December thirty postmark. Because in order to postmark bills, you must print bills, you must prepare bills, you must get your tax rate set by the state of Massachusetts. That is a three to four week process by itself. If you do not send out bills postmark by December thirty, the third quarter tax that is due on February one cannot be collected, strike that. We cannot require you to pay it, we can collect it for anybody that wants to come in and pay it. That means we blow through a full quarter without revenues.
Right.
We don't have those kinds of cash reserves. So, one of the articles on the special town meeting morgue would have to be in January possibly, authority to go borrow tax anticipation notes, which means that costs money, which means all of these departments have to be further cut to account for that interest.
So, what my question was is that not, at that January meeting, it's not, you're not, um, voting on our budget, because our budget has already been... voting on our budget because our budget has already been set by the commissioner.
Right, right, right. I mean, at your point, at some point, you're gonna have a budget, the town knows the max, that, but, but even knowing that, the actual appropriation voted by the town has to be reduced. The selectmen know the tripwire. They know the point at which no budget cuts are required, but they can't just say, ah, okay, we're going there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I had one more other thing to Mr. Terrence's things. We actually ran into this a couple of years ago, where we couldn't send out tax bills for a particular reason. The town ended up having to borrow the money. He, I, I, I think Carter just missed that, is that we, we could end up borrowing the money to take and end up doing that. Is that advisable? Not necessarily, because now you have to take and pay interest along with the money. So I, I mean, there's, there's a lot of implications around whatever the vote is by, by folks. My whole objection is that I, I, I see cuts that I, I cannot hang on to. I would rather see other things cut rather than what the, what has been presented. That's really, I, I, I think there's other areas of, if we have to make cuts, some of them I, I, I have reservations about because of the impact. The lack of, the lack of, of, of police, uh, a, a, in, in the evening, and the fact that you, you're impacting our ability to take and do ALS. We've got problems already with ALS, because I had one person that caught me before this meeting and says, I ended up having, on a Saturday, I had to take and call an ambulance, and unfortunately, for whatever, maybe they, they were on, they, they had the wrong crew on, we had to, they, the person had to take and call in, from, from Woods, which took another five or ten minutes, and it could have been a problem. So if you have lack of service as far as ALS, and then he can't respond as far as public safety, that puts people's lives in gen, i- i- in jeopardy here. I mean, there's a lot of implications here, all the way around.
So, so fundamentally, while I would kind of agree with what you're saying, my concern is, and it's not a knock to the townspeople, but the advisory committee, the board of selectmen, um, have a much, uh, more intimate knowledge of the town's budget and what those impacts would, would mean to, to the town. Uh, to me, in order to have, I mean, you could really spread this out for a very long time. If you remember the last town meeting, when we were start talking about making, um, the, um, civil penalties that the, uh, our police department could enforce versus making them, you know, uh, not federal, but state, or whatever. Um, we were gonna be there for a very long time if we went over that line by line. Um, I think that the board of selectmen is elected by the town to make these decisions. I think we at the advisory committee, um, have a much more know, much more knowledge of what it means. I would hope that, uh, the board of selectmen would include the advisory committee, uh, as a whole, if these cuts had to be made, and where the best place to take them is. Um, I, I just see that a line-by-line review of the budget again is not helping anyone. That's. Excuse me?
I'm, I'm not a resident of Templeton, so, but I, I just wondered, listening to the quandary here, um, I, I understand the concern, obviously, with having the select board decide what those cuts would be, um, and not allowing the taxpayer voice. Has, will there be a public hearing prior to the select board actually doing those? Would that be incorporated in so that people would have a voice prior to the select board? 'Cause I think that might make people feel better.
I, I would think so. I.
The chairman indicates.
Yes.
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 Yeah. They, they certainly would, these cuts would definitely not be made in a vacuum, if, hopefully, we don't have to make them.
It's not what the article says.
That's right.
That's right.
Again, I mean, the select board still has meetings, uh, you know, all through. It's not, we're not gonna stop talking with the.
Right, okay. I, I know what you're saying. The article gives the select board the authority to make the cuts. But the way you kind of presented that is like, well, we're just gonna all get together one day, have coffee and, and make the cuts and figure out. And I don't think that's the case.
However they choose.
The article says.
Okay, so, 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 right.
But they chose to do that.
No, you're, you're correct. I, I would like to think with three new members of the board of selectmen, um, with the advisory committee having a much better working relationship with the board of selectmen than has in years past, that they will include us in any of these decisions. But the fact is, they've been elected by the taxpayers, uh, to make these decisions.
Don't worry about it, right?
I understa, sorry.
One other thing, the, the, the select board has the ability after just listening to what was said by the administrator, that they can change that and say, okay, the selectmen will make the decision based upon inputs from the community a- a- after an open meeting. If that was in there, I would feel a little bit more comfortable, because now the townspeople have got some inputs. But just, and, and you're right. It, it, the way it's written, it, it says they can make the cuts regardless. They don't have to take the inputs.
What I would say then is, as a citizen of the town, you have every right to make a substitute motion to include that.
The, the issue is, well, maybe I should say this for town meeting floor, but the issue as well is if we had a functioning government, we wouldn't be in this situation. Now, that's blunt.
Okay, I.
All I'm trying to say.
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into criticism of a new administration, a functioning government. Um, I, I don't think that's fair.
Okay.
Okay?
You got a lot of new members. There was a time, you have a lot of new members on both your board and on the select board, that, you know, they haven't had an opportunity to gather the experience they need to make the decisions they've called upon to.
I would, I would, I would like you, so I've been in town for nineteen years. For about the first twelve years, the board of selectmen, everything, was, it was a complete mess in this town.
It was, very much.
Okay? People's personalities got in there. And it wasn't till about five or six years ago that I feel, I started paying more attention and, and feel like the tides had started to turn. So I think the previous board, maybe a little bit of the one before that, and this current board are heading this town in the right direction, given the fact that they, they're being handed a train with one wheel already off the track. So I don't think it's really fair personally to, to, to criticize the people that were elected until they have a chance to do something.
Not trying to criticize anybody, I'm just saying that the way the structure of the government is with less experienced individuals have not had the opportunity to gain the experience they need to make the kinds of decisions.
With all due respect, that's not how, that's not how it should be.
Okay, I'll, I'll be silent.
Tony?
You don't have to be silent.
No, it's okay. May I respond? So I've been a, a public servant since I was nineteen, and before that, I was a paper boy. So I guess I've been a, a, a public servant for a, a long, long time. Um, as an army enlisted person and an army officer, I've made lots of decision, uh, gone to school for decision-making processes. I didn't take it as a personal, uh, cut at all. Um, but I can tell you, just to get, get us back on track with what, what your, what the issue is, Article Two, I need the authority to adjust the budget based on what happens with the school budget. I, uh, for the, most of the people in the room have already been to some of the, the, the board meetings that, that I'm the chair, and I've got, um, one of my members with me tonight. I, I'm not the kind that is going to cut under the cover of darkness or otherwise. I, I, I genuinely feel that everyone in that room believes that. Um, there's a certain amount of faith and trust that you place in your people. That we're, you know, everyone behind me is elected, I'm elected. Um, people have the opportunity to be able to make those decisions. Um, I'm not, I'm not green. You had two members from the advisory board, um, and the lack of any candidate said, we will take this charge. We will, we will devote our time, um, and we will be on the select board. And already, we've, we've taken, um, taken it quite seriously. So Article Two, I just need the authority to be able to adjust the budget. I have a very good financial team that I trust implicitly. They are tough cuts, but we can do it if, if you need, uh, if you need a surety in the community that, uh, that, that we're going to talk about these cuts, Mr. Spring, I, I absolutely agree. I can't get to the point of chaos where everyone's gonna start pulling stuff out, you know, ripping the, the engine apart. But public input is absolutely appreciated when we actually have to start making those cuts. Again, I, I will say, public safety has already stepped forward and already is going to. On July twenty-second, start to make these cuts. It's not good.
And I would say, having worked with Mr. Curry for a year plus, uh, he, he does have a credo of transparency in government. And, and that's, that's what we need. I mean, that, I think there's a lot of mistrust with government inherent. They think people are going in the, in the boiler room and making all these decisions. They're not. They're trying to make the best decisions for the community. Um, I was thinking of whether we needed a motion for this, uh, to how we would vote. But actually, I don't think we really do need a motion. I think what I would prefer to do, if all discussion is done, is, uh, get your recommendation for or against, and I will, and we will write that recommendation.
It should be, it should be a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, because if you recommend a motion for no and it doesn't pass, then, um, then do we make a motion for, or does it automatically switch to it?
We still have to have a, a motion to take.
Okay.
And, and it'll change it up if the.
It's, it's, you're, 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 you're voting on the motion as it's written.
All right. So.
I'll make a motion to recommend for Article Two as, as it's written.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? Debbie?
Yes.
Will?
No.
Bob?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
And I believe I can vote on this, and I'm a yes.
Oh, excuse me. I thought you said any further discussion, yes or no.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
My bad.
Oh, oh.
Rewind.
Sorry.
Oh.
That's what I heard, any further discussion?
Yeah, no, and I didn't hear anything, so I apologize. Okay, you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, uh, four yeses and one no.
Will, do you agree with me?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, at this time, uh, if there are no further comments from anybody, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, is it dissolve the correct word, Will?
Uh, mo, a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn pre-town meeting?
Yes. So, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, at this time, the, uh, pre-town meeting is adjourned. We're gonna continue with our normal business. Uh, I'd like to, um, take a five-minute recess. So, people, uh, you're all are welcome to stay, but we're just gonna talk about boring stuff.
Wow, that sounds cool.
Gee. Oh, I, I, look, look, it was a very difficult, it was a very difficult two hours. I appreciate everybody that came. Thank you for coming, sir. I, some great inputs. Now, I don't ever take things personally. I have very thick skin. I, I, like Mr. Curry, was a member of the military for quite a few years, so.
So welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Sean, do you?
Yes, get to enjoy all the fun.
I was at the, uh, selectmen's meeting last night. That was really, we're on a hectic.
Yeah, we tend to, so my wife's also on the committee, she's not here tonight, but we tend to watch the day after.